Hey, Sybil, I don't know if uh you intend the sound to be up, but the sound is off. Yes, thanks.
So it is six oh two according to our our handy dandy computer clock. I believe we have a quorum here. But as we begin, first I'd like to uh welcome Jennifer to the planning commission. So welcome. Yes, we will do a roll call and I'll call our meeting to order. And I will ask Sybil to give us a roll call.
Um, I'll start with you. Chair Nolan.
Present.
Uh Commissioner Hamilton.
Present.
Commissioner Abrams.
Present.
Commissioner Burunda.
Present.
Commissioner Brials just on time.
Present.
Commissioner Schultz.
Uh present.
Commissioner Geiger.
Present.
Okay, thank you. And so like, so we called our meeting to order. We've had a roll call. We have minutes and I would point out, I was just conversing with Sybil about, we did have a joint meeting with the council and we will have minutes available for that to approve next meeting. So we'll get those out so people can look at it. Rather informal, it's more the video, but we'll cover that. But in our packets and published was a, the minutes from our April meeting, April eighteenth meeting, and I'd ask if there's any changes to those. And not seeing anyone with suggested edits or changes, I'd ask for a motion to adopt the minutes.
Uh Dave Hamilton, I move they be approved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Okay, minutes are approved. And so then we go roll call, approval of minutes. I don't believe we have a hearing tonight, and so we've left that. So that gets us to briefings and discussion.
Okay, um I'm gonna share my screen real quick and um Andrew, if you're ready.
Hey.
Oh, okay.
You, you, I'll interrupt it. I just my chair asked me about an introduction, Jennifer. I don't know if you wanna, if there's anything we can do to welcome you? Or you can get a, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name's Jennifer Schulte. Um I'm happy to be a part of the planning commission now. Just for your information, I have a background in uh chemical engineering and I work as an environmental consultant specializing mainly in air quality, greenhouse gas, noise, and he- health risk assessments. I've, I've read a lot of and attended a lot of planning commissions in my career, so I'm excited to help see our city um become the best it can be.
Now, welcome, and I know that the council members were very impressed with you in the interview process and you are a huge addition to uh a committee at a time when we have a lot of work to do and so. Welcome and yeah, feel free to reach out to staff or myself uh if you have any questions or concerns. With that, we'll continue on to our briefing and discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start off. Are you ready, Sybil, to start? With the presentation?
It's not wanting to show my PDF, so.
So.
Just a minute, please.
That's okay. Can I just tell you to switch slides when we go?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so. Share screen. Show all of them.
Um. He found it.
I found it.
Okay, good evening, planning commission. I'm Mandy Roberts with OTAC. I'm your consultant. You all know me, but Commissioner Schulte does not, so wanted to introduce myself. I'm a principal planner with the firm and um our project manager for the conference of plan update. And also with me tonight is Andrew Oliver with Leland Consulting Group. They are working as our partners on this conference of plan update. So uh next slide, thank you. Just a reminder of where we are in the process. We're clicking through the plan elements and tonight we're gonna introduce the environment and the parks, recreation and open space elements. And then we're gonna round out the evening talking about economic vitality and some of the comments uh that we've received on that. Uh so excited about that and good timing for Commissioner Schulte who has an environmental background, so perfect. Uh we'll, we'll introduce the goals and policies and parks, recreation, open space draft goals and policies for environment and parks, recreation, open space together. Uh and as we have been doing in the past meetings, we introduce those tonight and then you have them for review and comment and then we'll talk about your comments at our next planning commission meeting uh related to those elements. We thought it made a lot of sense to kind of couple those together given the overlapping possibilities between environment and parks, so. Uh and then we'll also, with Andrew's help, we'll talk about feedback that we received on the economic vitality draft goals and policies. We have a little bit of a space towards the end of the meeting, just to recap the uh city council um comments and our joint meeting comments on economic development, which we're now calling economic vitality as a result of that meeting, which I thought was a great uh a great change. And then we'll just recap on next steps. So just a reminder, we are going through the plan. We're using your previous goals and policies as a foundation to work from, but there's been a lot of change uh in the planning world since 2015. So we're looking at guidance from state, including the Department of Commerce checklist for goals and policies. We're looking at the draft interim guidance on climate element development that's come out from the state. That's um as a result of House Bill eleven eighty-one. And then we're also, of course, looking at Puget Sound Regional Council's multi-county planning policies, the countywide planning policies, First and Homish County, and taking into account your input and staff input as we go along. So let's talk about the environment goals and policies first. So the first goal is really, you know, making sure that we continue to have a high-quality environment in Mill Creek, which is one of the great things that people cherish about this community, having an attractive, high-quality environment and improving air, water quality, soils and natural systems, whoops, to ensure the health and well-being of people, animals and plants um through creative design, landscaping and control of impacts and some of the related policies you see here on the right. I won't read them all, but we have policy statements that we've developed to address each and every one of these particular topics. The goal E two. Stewardship. Continue to be good stewards of the environment by taking appropriate measures to reduce the environmental impacts of future development and city operations. So there are policy statements around conservation easements, interdisciplinary planning and coordination, um coordination to protect open spaces and wildlife corridors and tribal treaty rights, which is something that's really stemming from state legislation to include policy around uh tribal treaty rights. And then goal E three, protection and mitigation. Promote high standards of environmental protection and mitigation, including sensitive treatment and preservation of the natural environment and critical areas based on best available qualitative and quantitative information and really best available science rules um as part of that. And that's really a newer um area of guidance that we're getting from the state to make sure that we're applying best available science as we um can consider stream corridors, buffers, that kind of thing, that kind of thing. And policies on the right-hand side, I won't read those, but pretty straightforward. The one thing that's really kind of important about goal E three. Oh, wait. Yes, I'm sorry.
When we talk about best available science rules, um as you're maybe in the, in the detailed policies, well, are we gonna reference specific aspect that we want to follow? I, I recall before a year or two, we were looking at wetlands and there was specific state documentation that we use to revise our wetland buffer zones, right?
Yeah.
Um so I'm curious, like, are we gonna have that level of details in our policies? Is that gonna go more at the lower level uh?
Yeah, good, good. Glad you asked about that. So, so the policies stay pretty high level, but I was just gonna mention that, that this goal and supporting policies is really important to support your critical areas ordinance, which is part of your code. And that's where the specific dimensions of buffers and requirements are called out in your code. So um those are updated to meet state requirements and.
Um, can I ask a question on that?
Of course, yeah.
Are we going to have a, a definition of what best available science means? Cause I think that could be interpreted very differently between professionals and the lay public. Um and maybe do something in like a write-up when we're defining things. Um something that gives us some hierarchical structure of how we're gonna go about that. Like state, local, you know, regional boards, policies and stuff like that, down to, you know, something that's just literature published, you know, kind of have some definition so it conveys what that means to both the professional world and the lay public. Cause best available assignments is extremely vague.
Yeah.
And it could be widely.
Yeah. No, really good point, Commissioner Schulte. So there has been recent guidance from the state on, you know, exactly what they mean by that. So we'll um make note of your comment and as we go along, we are making note of what we need to provide definitions for or callouts for in the plan. So I've got that noted based on what you're saying and and um we might need to even include an appendix item on the best available science review that's required by the state. But yeah, thanks for suggesting that. Okay, so um goal four is about habitat. And specifically, um North Creek is such an asset environmentally to uh Mill Creek and so we want to continue to develop and enforce policies and regulations that protect the habitat um within the North Creek corridor and its tributaries and that support healthy wildlife and accelerate the recovery of salmon, orca and other threatened and endangered species. And I think those um goals were similarly included in your last conference of plans, so we're kind of updating those. And then goal E five relates to development impact, so minimizing development impacts to natural features by encouraging the use of low-impact development techniques. Those would be things like um stormwater planters in your streetscape, um green roofs like you have across the street at uh there's a little green roof on that retail area across the street. I can't remember what that's called, but it's kind of cool. And permeable pavers, infiltration, um facilities, things like that. That's what's considered to be low-impact development. And other innovative, environmentally sensitive development practices, design materials, construction and ongoing maintenance. And so this all relates a lot to water, water quality and stormwater management. And so we have policies drafted around, around those aspects. And then we go into goal E six, which is air quality and climate change related. And again, we are you know, the, the city won't be required to have a climate element until twenty twenty-nine. But we are kind of looking ahead to that and what the state's recommending related to having a climate and resiliency element. And so some of the policy language here is directly um uh driven by that state guidance that you'll, you'll eventually need to meet. So we're just gonna try to give you a leg up to get into that point um before twenty twenty-nine. So there are adopted targets um that that cities are gonna be required to meet to minimize greenhouse gas emissions and air, there already are air um pollution requirements, so to stay aligned with those is what that goal is all about. And then we have um a natural hazards goal, which is really addressing, um you know, human-caused risks and natural environments capacity to absorb and reduce the impacts of natural hazard events and being prepared. So that would be things like flooding. Uh maybe earthquakes, but flooding, I mean, you guys don't have a ton of steep slopes, but you have some. Um so that kind of thing, being prepared for that. Wow, lots of environment goals. That's awesome. Two more. Greenhouse gas emissions, which is also climate-related. Establish and or support programs that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase energy conservation, including the retrofit of existing buildings, expansion of alternative and clean energy use within the public and private sector and the use of environmentally sustainable building techniques and materials. And so a lot of this happens um within code and codes are getting better and better at water and energy conservation. We just want to have a, a goal and some policies around continuing to support that and indicating that that's important to your community. Yes, Commissioner Hamilton?
Yeah, on the related policies, what does slopes appropriate for development? What does that mean?
Yeah, and I think that might be a little bit misplaced, I have to say.
Steep slopes, but.
Yeah, that might actually have been associated with goal E seven, previous.
Thank you.
Yes.
I think construction B and Bs is also a stormwater thing and not.
I agree, yes. Uh so apologies on that. And when, when you get the actual policy language, if we need to scoot it around, we'll do that, just so you know. The draft policy, yeah. Okay, great. And then our last goal is around noise and light pollution. Ensure that excessive noise and light pollution does not impair permitted land use activities in residential, commercial and industrial zoning districts. And consider potential impacts that may overburden vulnerable populations. So noise impacts and mitigation will be the policy language there. And a lot of that is already managed by code provisions. So again, we're just trying to have policy language that supports what's in your code related to noise and light, so. That kind of covers environment. Before I go on to parks and recreation, are there any, again, again, remember you're gonna have time to review and we'll have a very detailed discussion in your next meeting, but are there any initial comments or thoughts on this before we move on? Yes?
One, one comment. I, on one of the planning items, you again on the E four habitat, it has identify and protect habitat in the city and in the MOGA. And I think even in the council meeting, you heard the annexation areas are not, we don't plan for the MOGA. That Snohomish County is planning for that and we make comments on that.
Okay.
We just have to be, I think, aware of that.
Yeah.
Our council direction is we're not looking at annexations in the imminent future and so using the policies for MOGA is, is kind of.
Okay. Good point.
And then goal E nine, you know, it's the, you know, the, the goal is noise and light pollution, but we only have a policy around noise impact. Should we have a separate policy for light pollution?
Yeah, we should.
Shining down into the wetland, I don't know. Or something like that.
Yeah, we should.
Um, I have a just uh kind of out-there thought, um and it's from what I've seen a lot of other plans do is we have a lot of mixed environmental um resource topics and that, by that I mean like biological, water, air, greenhouse gas, noise, etcetera. Um and they're crossed in each of these different goals. What I've seen a lot more of and it makes more sense from my perspective for the layperson to read is if we put the goals as goals for a resource topic and then the policies would be more things that we want to do within that topic. So if we have something um that is, um you know, some of these goals, I'd almost kind of flip that we grouped all the noise stuff together and some of the things that were, as a policy were noises meant or as a goal currently, the mentions noise or mentions water is more of a policy statement. Cause then we can talk about the concepts that they need to know for noise and then they see all the noise things, or we talk about the concepts of the biological species and we talk about all the things we're gonna do with, for the, for those biological or with water. You know, we, we have like a bunch of different things that we're, we want to do and meet different reasons for them. And you know, so then you're not jumping around from uh these topics that for the layperson might not be as familiar with and they just read all the, the the, the layperson way I need to understand like biology or water, and then they just see all the policies related with that. Um but you know, I just want to see what other people think about that suggestion.
Yeah, I, I mean, thank you, Commissioner Schulte. That's, that is actually what we're trying to do without having an extensive amount of goals. So we are trying to have them address specific topics. So I would just encourage you, when you go through a review, if you see an opportunity to split things out more, please just make recommendations to us and we, we can take a look at that. Yeah.
Okay.
All right, ready to move on to parks and recreation and open space? Uh so the first goal, P one, is really to provide an equitable, high-quality parks and recreation system that provides a variety of a- amenities and is welcoming to people of all ages, abilities, incomes and participation levels. And um you know, that, this is a really important goal, supported by policies around meeting accessibility requirements, having safe and durable facilities. And um you know, we think it's important to keep this in. There were similar goals and policies in the last plan, so we think it's important for the city to continue to, to have that aspiration. And then we have um P two, which is really of providing unique vibrant recreation experiences for Mill Creek residents and visitors. So um that could be, you know, things associated with the North Creek corridor, um wayfinding, um interpretation and history, which you have a lot of that in downtown. Um and so we've got policies kind of related to those things as well as community participation to continue to drive how um parks and recreation experiences are developed in the city. And then goal P three is about providing a variety of park types and sizes that are easily accessible and well-distributed throughout the city. When we think about this, we're thinking about the public parks that the city manages, but also the opportunities for private park access, which happens in a lot of the subdivisions and planned communities, there are private park opportunities. So we want to continue to require those as new developments happen. And provide, you know, access to those opportunities, so. Um, P four is looking at how to meet our needs as the community grows. And we've had a lot of discussions, for example, in, in um looking at the growth alternatives and creating growth south of town center. So that would definitely be an area of need as more people are moving there, more employees are there. So making sure that we are looking for opportunities to uh meet those needs through acquisition or development of parks and recreation facilities. Um and engaging, engaging people in that process. So you'll see policies related to that. And then um the parks and open space role in the environment, it's important to recognize that having a parks and open space system that can also um leverage opportunities to protect the environment and natural amenities within the city. And you know, again, we can probably strike the M U G A um reference there. But just um making sure that we're, you know, some of these areas that are open space aren't naturally oriented and just making sure we're considering how those are important to the environment and improving that like through retention of natural vegetation, so. We got two more. Um, we have standards and guidelines in the plan. And um one of the things we know is that the city does not have a parks or recreation department. And staff is very limited for planning and maintaining your parks and recreation. That really falls to the planning department to do that. So um some of the predecessor planners developed some standards, at least as a starting point for, you know, what should be required at a minimum to serve your community as it grows. Those will continue to be included in the plan as, as background to the parks, recreation and open space element. And this policy is um just indicating a reference to those, but also the need to evaluate those as the city grows and changes. So I see there's a little typo there on facility guidelines.
I got a question on this one. Is level of service a, a term that Washington uses for a lot of talk bits? Cause I'm used to seeing level of service in respect to transportation delays.
Yeah, it is used.
Do we plan to use it in two places or do we not refer to level of service or transportation here?
No, we will be referring to it in transportation as well. In fact, there's a new uh state set of guidance around multimodal level of service. So we'll be bringing that forward in a future discussion about transportation. And then there are other areas of level of service with other um public services, including parks.
So they use this term more broadly here than other places may.
Yeah, we do, yeah.
I just want to make sure we wouldn't be confusing the, the public if, 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 if that was a term or if there was other terms, but if that's a term of art they use in Washington State, then I'm fine with that.
Yes, it is. It's widely used, yep.
Okay.
Okay, and then of course we need funding to implement parks and recreation improvements and upkeep. So um this, this goal is really around considering all available financing mechanisms and grants to fund ongoing parks and recreation um implementation. So that kind of rounds out the parks, recreation, open space goals and policies in draft form. And I will have to say, everything is very draft, so we look forward to your review and comments and we'll continue to refine and improve these goals and policies.
Okay, any question? Yeah, um, when you're talking about funding, um what types of funding are you talking?
Yeah, Washington State actually has several grants through, I think it's called the Recreation Something Organization, R C O. But there are different grant programs associated with salmon recovery, associated with recreation needs. And so the city can apply. And so the city can apply to those. Um, on a regular basis and get funding for parks. Or stream restoration or different open space um. Activities in in the city.
So what happens hypothetically if we apply for a grant of some kind? And the grant only provides for a specific amount of money. Which is incomplete to develop a park, for example. Then where is the funding come?
So usually the way that the, oh, you, do you wanna address that civil? Go for it.
Usually before we apply for a grant, a proposal. Is made to city council with the full scope of what the project will cost. So if a grant that we're going for cannot fully support that project. City council will have to identify additional funds to help support. If city council thinks that they cannot support that project. Um, they would recommend not to go forward with that um. Application, but all a grant that we go after comes before city council for approval.
So would we be hypothetically again uh trying to initiate bonding activity?
Um, I'm not aware of uh going after bonds for grants.
No, no, when the when the grant is incomplete, would the. City try to satisfy the obligation through the issuance of bonds?
Um. I I'm not.
I'm not aware of the.
I've never heard that. Just curious, so how does, how do you? A lot of this is very, very good and it's commendable, but then there's the practicality of implementation.
Some cities and we might wanna consider a policy around this. Some cities implement a park impact fee. Or fee in lieu of program. As a way to um get funding from new development that's happening that can then can go into a fund for. General parks recreation development, so. We might wanna consider having a policy to explore the potential for parks impact program.
Not to. Drive our policy or a grow growth plan too too narrow, but one of the things that our previous. Uh, planning manager drove for the city was the whole Penny Creek Nature Area. And the city has options on that over time and what we'd wanna, I'd I'd wanna make sure that as we look at these policies. Uh, we at least presented the council, hey, is this where we wanna go or not wanna go with that area over there? Cause that is a huge. Expensive piece of property that does offer value to the. To the ca- the city and the city has. Some rights there and and so I I would think as a commission, we would look at that and we would make recommendations thinking about, okay, it's just. What we want for our community or don't want and what would be the avenues over time to do that? And if other pieces come up, but yeah, that is. A piece where we do have rights on that over time and could go for grants and. They this and it was again a development piece of it where the developer had to set it as aside for us.
So you would be probably be considering public-private kind of activities for funding.
Yes, you would.
Man- Mandy, um, I I just wanna point out that um Mill Creek does already have a parks um impact fee.
Oh, good, okay.
Seventeen hundred bucks per condo. Uh, or a single family and eleven per multifamily for what it's worth.
While while Mandy is sitting in the seat currently labeled Laurel Brock, who used to be the finance director, I don't think that she knows how. Our city does all its finances. There are numerous ways in which you could fund any deficit, uh including. Something like issuing a bond or raising sales tax or uh diverting from something else or taking a chunk from the general fund or. Anything over time, um. It's, there are very many different potential options and it would come down to. What would the scale and size of that be if if you're trying to. Buy a chunk of a five million dollar chunk of land to have a park in and you're going after a grant for five thousand dollars to help you. Clear clearly, that means. You you're gonna have to make up a big chunk, right? Um, so it it. It would all have to balance out in whatever the proposal would be that you're looking at. Um, so there's. Let me put it this way, I don't think we have ne- nearly enough equations for the number of variables in what we're talking about right now to actually solve. To to get an answer here. I I don't think we could even give it, bring it down to three or four variables that we would.
Answers, I'm just asking for what the philosophy is and. The philosophy is something which is important. To us, obviously, but it's also important to the people who live in the community, who asks the simple question, these are. Very, very nice goals, but how how am I gonna be? Responsible for this and how is it gonna be paid for? That's all.
Yeah.
Can I, can I jump in real quick?
Uh commissioners to turn on their mics.
Yeah, can I, can I jump in real quick?
Yes, please.
Um, the city I work for, um, we have a stormwater utility and um. We pay for pretty much a lot of stuff like parks related just because of stormwater ties to everything. So I mean, if you're talking about L I D. Components or stormwater ponds or something or even transportation like stormwater usually find a way to pay for for it, so.
And Department of Ecology Grants can help support some of that too and. And there is a really eh growing trend towards stormwater parks. Where you have park facilities that are built over the top of vaults or. You know, even integrated with um stormwater storage areas and. You know, instead of the old fashioned way of kind of. Developing trapezoidal detention ponds with chain link fences around them. We're trying to get more creative with how we use. Public space, so it can be multifunctional, right? So there's some great creativity out there that's happening and. Um, maybe we might wanna add some policies around that actually. So thank you, Commissioner Tiger. And I would, I had men amend my recommendation earlier. Maybe it shouldn't be explore the parks impact fee, but rather. Continue to um support that or continue to leverage that as a source of funding, so, yeah.
I, and actually, if you, if you were already looking at that, Andrew, uh, you'd mentioned some specific numbers for development of, it sounds like housing. Was there any other development like commercial or retail or industrial that also has arc impact fees?
Uh, I only researched it in relation to our previous conversation about fiscal impacts of multifamily development in the sub area, so. That was the the sheet from um. From your impact B schedule that I had loaded up. There may be others, yeah. Uh, I just didn't time to research any beyond what, you know, the housing requirements.
Yeah, and I thank you. Uh, I just wondered if we did have that, but I know typically that is where a lot of um. Park impact fees come from is development of housing. I just wanted to see if there were other areas.
Any other parks?
Yeah, something I have seen just as funding sources is actually to raise funds from your community to help make up a portion of of. Residual funds um to help chase grants. People that use and love the parks tend to donate. You can also get. Pe- businesses in your community to do either cash donations or the donation of goods and services. Um, and just to add, you know, I know about a bunch of federal grants that are out there for park and recreation. Especially if you can tie it to pathways to get to school. Um, there's a lot of money in getting. Kids to walk or bike to school again, um, which you can usually tie in with the park system in a lot of places and. I agree, but we should add something about the beautification of our retention ponds to make them more. Um, multi amendable instead of just them fenced in. I'm used to seeing a little bit beautiful retention ponds that can be used for. Attractiveness or recreation.
Okay, anything additional? I think we're set to go forward with economic vitality goals.
Okay, we'll turn it over to Andrew.
Cool, thank you. Uh, sorry, I've I've gotten, uh, thanks to your comment, I've now gotten uh. Blogged down and reading resolution twenty thirteen five oh three. But um anyway, that's what the impact you raised. I didn't see anything in there beyond the housing, at least I think. Okay, so um last month we um presented you the draft goals on economic uh. Development, which have now been changed economic vitality. As we talked about with the um city council, Mandy's gonna talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Um, so we're gonna go through uh some of the high level comments. Um, as we do with housing and land use, so we heard from four commissioners. Uh, there were a lot of good suggestions on uh tightening up some of the language. Uh, taken out a lot of extraneous does and commas and things, uh, so we will um. Uh, you'll see those in um this version here is what's going on the website like the other elements, uh, so you can see all the comments. And uh those will be in green, as you can see there below the uh original uh is a proposed language revisions. So we'll be incorporating those into the final draft. Um, there weren't any sort of over, no incentives overarching comments about economic development goals policies overall. Uh, but there was some specific feedback on a few ideas, uh, so we can go to the next slide, civil. Thank you. Um, so looking at the first two goals, uh. Goal one, I guess we'll have to re rename these E V, I guess, rather than E D, I just realized that. So this is the sort of general goal uh about continued growth and development. And um there was a comment uh to, you know, make sure that there's. Uh, some reference to design standards in the policy. Uh, which talks about reviewing code requirements and permitting, making sure they're business friendly, while maintaining other things that are important to the city. Such as uh uh environmental and land use standards. Uh, there was a suggestion to also tie in the design review board and aesthetic standards there. Uh, so that there's a connection between design review and economics. Uh, so we're gonna add that. Um, again, on annexation, uh, a few suggestions of rewording and comments and a good comment to. Uh, specifically call it Snohomish County um for uh partnership and coordination on annexation. Um, and future land use in these areas that will allow the city to potentially achieve second of goals. Um, and on uh goal E D two, this is the goal that talked about. Uh, retail businesses and tax revenues. Um, there was a suggestion uh that, so there was a policy that we put in. Uh, after our conversation with you two weeks ago, uh, about potentially exploring a minimum wage increase in the city. Uh, and there was a suggestion to potentially remove that policy. Given the potential complexity of a city. Uh, of Mill Creek, you know, actually implementing a minimum wage increase. So I kinda wanna bring that one back uh for a little discussion or i- if anyone has thoughts. On that, um. Uh, if it makes sense to sort of leave that in, remove it, or rephrase it in some way. Uh, if there's any a- any uh discussion that you guys wanna have on that.
Um, I know I believe that the way it was worded was said something along the lines of. Explore or consider or. Perform a study or something along those lines. Um, so. I think that. The possibility of staffing challenges would be explored as a part of that. Um, so I don't think we should strike it. For the fact that there might be one negative. That should be considered within that exploration. I would rather that we continue forward with. That exploration. Um, and include potentially any. Impacts that there may be. Which I would assume would be a part of that exploration. I don't, I don't think anything that we explore here has is, we expect to be all upsides. Sure, there's gonna be some kind of trade offs somewhere to review and consider.
Yeah, and I guess and it would still be, I mean, eventually we'll still go back to the the council as to whether that's even something they wanna. Pursue and provide direction to the staff, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, all of this stuff.
That increase minimum wages. If the city wants it, it's decided on its own to do that.
Other questions?
I I guess, um, you just say staff challenges. Is that about staffing within the city or I'm sorry? City staff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Pull off on, I I was the one who made the comment, cause it's, do we have enough staffing in the city in order to pull off an ordinance with our relatively small size? And enforce, you know, local minimum wage.
Okay, in that case. Uh, still part of the exploration of. Whether, yeah, what is the feasibility of us being able to enforce such a thing? Or do we somehow? Farm that out to. Washington State L and I Labor and Industries. I don't know. I don't know how that works. I don't know how Seattle does it. I don't know how to uh C TAC does it. But those are bigger cities and we could certainly explore what they do as part of that exploration.
I I like your approach, which is explore whether it works. Is it economically viable? Does it buy something for the city? I just felt like the way it was worded, at least when I read it, it was like, hey, we we need to have a minimum wage, you know, of our own. I'm thinking, well, wait a second, that could be.
Well, there's a state minimum. How does the state?
Minimum wage.
Enforce it. Is it through L and I?
Other, other questions or comments in that you'd like to discuss, Andrew?
Um, yeah, there's a couple more slides, but um on that one, we'll we'll keep it in there and and make sure to word it in a general way of exploration rather than any kind of. Uh, okay, next slide, civil. Okay, uh, this is moving on to goal number three, uh, which is the goal about um. Housing and economic development. Uh, there was a a good suggestion to add. Uh, working from home and remote work uh in the discussion in the sentence that talks about increasing quality of life. And uh reducing traffic and commute times since that can be, you know, in- involved there. Um, uh, yeah, we did write something that said Mill Creek employees. My intention was um. Exactly what you indicated there, um, Commissioner Viles, workers employed within Mill Creek, which makes a lot more sense, so we'll fix that. Um, on this next question, uh, you know, there's. At the bottom of this, there was a little blue call out that said, uh, discussion of critical mass. There was this this verbiage about creating a critical mass to support commercial services. Uh, within the urban village. And uh, there was a question about, you know, what what is that critical mass? How many? How many housing units are people? What density of development do you need to support, you know, a certain density of commercial or level of commercial um? Uh, uh, commercial activity or uh in, you know, such as in the in the new sub area or in town center. Um, we, I did a little bit of reading about this today and looked at some uh recent work we've done. Uh, actually in Olympia about neighborhood centers and um. You know, the it it, we analyzed some. Centers that were more and less successful commercially and their density and there wasn't, at least in that example, there wasn't a very strong. You know, sort of number that jumped out as sort of a minimum density that you would need to have a successful commercial center. Uh, as far as population proximity, because there were so many other factors involved and there may be some academic studies or regressions that have been done about this um. Uh, that could try to look for, but um in in general, there's, there's so many things involved. Uh, you know, uh, urban form, walkability, access to transit, which is also coming into play here with the with the B R T. Um. Uh, and so I think there's not really a, you know, an easily quantifiable ratio that we could put in here. But in that uh discussion of what critical mass is, which is gonna be one of, you know, one of these callouts on the side. Um, we'll try to find some better resources or maybe a study or two to link to um that that discussed that in greater detail. Um, as far as the, oh, sorry, coming back one second. Thanks. Um, as far as policies underneath uh goal three, there was just some. Uh, more similar as we were talking about earlier, making sure that we sort of make it clear, uh. When we're talking about residents of the city, uh, people nearby using services, we've mostly taken the. Muga description out of here, but there's a little more refining to do there. Uh, and there was a policy about sub areas. There was a policy about. Uh, the Muckberry Boulevard sub area. At some point, um, there's a different policy about the vitality of town center and EGO. And we will add um Mill Creek Boulevard to that list, um, uh, so that it's sort of included there. Okay, and uh this is the last one, um, so on goal four, which is uh goal about. Uh, tracking new businesses. Um, there was a question about why folks on export based industries. Uh, one of them reasons to include that is um that it's a P S R C regional goal, so. Trying to make sure that we're ticking the boxes that are required um in compliance with P S R C. Um, and they encourage, uh, you know, the development of industries that provide export. Um, also, um, we talked about things like aerospace and technology and others sort of larger sectors. Uh, so that was intended to reference those as well, but I think it um does make sense to. So that was intended to reference those as well, but I think it, um, does make sense to, you know, talk about, uh, businesses that. That keep profits within, uh, the Mill Creek area as well, so I think we should add that into that goal. And, uh. Okay, question on planning commission's role in dedicating resources towards economic development set. Basically, this is similar to the, uh, minimum wage question. Because the council's gonna review and sign off on all of these things anyway, and eventually adopt this plan. We think that it makes sense to leave the poli, the policy in there, uh, about potentially increasing resources towards economic development set, um, for the council to sort of. Evaluate how they wanna move forward with that, and if they move forward with it. Uh, finally, the last, um, goal, which is on climate friendly and sustainable businesses, there were some good suggestions on how to tighten up some of these. Uh, policies and there were a number of policies in here that had long lists of examples of ways the policy could be implemented. And I, I agree with, I think with Commissioner Nolan, who suggested that those are overly specific for policy and should sort of probably belong in a discussion of implementation. So we'll tighten those policies up, uh, and convince them of it.
On that, you know, one idea I had since I, I, I'm just new on this. Is the concept of, uh, the city doing a sustainable certification program? Or if there's other agencies that run them that we could encourage businesses to do. And, and it could be just, we maintain a list of people that have met a third party standard or we create our own. That really is something people, businesses can do and market on. Especially as, um, you know, a lot more people are tuned into sustainability and having some standard that's marketable. For them encourages people to do it more.
Yeah, that's a great idea. We'll find a place to incorporate that, whether it be here or in, uh, in implementation. But I noted it down. Okay, um, any other discussion or feedback on the economic vitality goals and policies?
I had one on the E D six that you, you didn't get comments on.
Oh, sorry.
Watched. There was.
One more?
Well, I think so.
Okay, sorry, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Cause it was, it was on about, uh, encouraging small businesses.
Oh, yeah.
And we list like, um, small business, women owned business and. Um, minority owned, I, I think we wanna add, especially since we have a lot of military in the area. Specifically, uh, disabled veterans. Cause those are the, some of the classes that are like in federal contracts that you get classified as a disadvantaged business enterprise. So I think since we have a large military presence in the sound, we wanna encourage that one also.
Yeah, that's a great point, we'll add that to the list. In the, uh, in the, in the next chapter, thank you.
No, just gonna make a comment on the previous one that Jennifer had mentioned about, you know, the. That list, I'm wondering, would that be something that would live under the economic vitality section or is that something that belongs in, in our general? Environmental section, it's more of a semantics thing than. Like, I'm not sure if there's a, it's a better area where that, that feedback would, would. I, I, I like the idea, I just wanted to see like, what section does it make sense?
Yeah, I think it does fit in economic, because you know, it's, it's kind of showing. That the, the bit, the, the people that are, you know, easily blocked out by. Big corporations and big businesses, you are including them in your economic. Plan that they should have a place in the city of Mill Creek. And like I said, there's a lot of benefits, like, um, federal contracts require, uh, thirteen something percent for disadvantaged business enterprises. Um, and the state has its own other goals for the small businesses and the disadvantaged business enterprise. If you get any money from a state contract as well. And so it just says, you know, we have a place for that in our community. And I think that's really important because economic development, one of the things. We didn't really list out in our stuff was infrastructure, which we in the next. Few years have a lot of infrastructure debt that we're gonna have to work with. And those were, is where a lot of federal dollars and a lot of state dollars come from. Where we can grow smaller businesses, um, off of that. And these can be like your professional services and stuff like that as small businesses that meet those types of, um, criterion.
Sorry, my apologies, I guess I was referring to the, the comment you had made before, not the, the, the. The one about like around military veterans and so forth, but the comment you made before about the, um.
Oh, sustainable certification.
Sustainable certification, yeah, sorry, sustainable certification, whether that may send us a under economic vitality versus a. At one of our environmental ones perhaps. Um, I wish it wasn't sure if that maybe is something we do.
I think I could go either, either place or you could cross reference the policy. Because one is, is your, you'd be catching the environmental people, but the other one is economic is, is it does have marketing ability. Have benefited from that green, having the green or sustainable policies.
I think it could definitely be cross referenced, I mean, I, I would agree that it, uh. It might live here, it might be convenient for that to live here in a way, because, um, there is already this policy around, you know, connecting. Businesses with, um, environmental goals and. The, you know, regional emphasis on, on green business that the multi county kind of paying policies encourage are encouraging jurisdictions to have a goal of a, um, sustainable business. So I think, I think it'd go here, but definitely be referenced in the environmental element. Uh, as well, yeah.
On that, just one, one on sustainable, that a sustainable business practice can also be not just about, uh, environmental sustainability. But economic sustainability, the ability for a business to continue going, that it isn't all growth forever and ever, but value generation. That isn't, uh, growth based. So there is an aspect to that, and additionally, as you mentioned, just the marketability of that sustainable rating. I think still kind of keeps it within the economic, uh, range. I just wanted to also add, Andrew, great job. I know for one, I don't know about everybody else, but I didn't get my comments in until two days ago. And I don't know if you got them two days ago, so way to go on incorporating those, uh, it sounds like you. Did what you could with what little time we gave you, so, or at least that I gave you, so thank you very much for getting that done. And I promise I am gonna work hard at getting my comments next time, uh, in with, to give you a little bit more time.
No problem, I was glad that we got them in time. Thanks for sending.
Yeah, clearly it got in in time because Andrew's awesome.
Okay, I think we move forward.
Okay, um, so this last piece is just a little bit of a recap on the meeting we had. Early last week as a joint. Uh, city council planning commission meeting and. We had a great discussion on economic development and economic vitality. And so our team also will be taking into consideration that discussion as we advance. Our revisions on the economic vitality policies, so just to. Touch on some of the topics that we talked about. Sybil, if you wanna go to the next. We had a lot of conversation, it was a great meeting, um. So just some of the things we talked about, every, there was a lot of positivity around changing. To economic vitality. And putting more focus on that rather than economic development, so. We'll be doing that, um, also, there was a lot of supportive conversation around. Considering aspects related to working from home, as well as the downsizing needs of the population. Here in, um, Mill Creek. Um, we talked about the need for condominiums, places to own, not just places to rent. We also talked about, um, the challenges around. Active use on the ground floor and making sure that. Those spaces are zoned flexibly and designed and built flexibly. So they can support a number of different types of uses, not just. Retail and not just offices, but, um. You know, be active places that, that's really the intent. We, we talked about what Mill Creek's assets are, that they're really different. From other cities and that we really need to differentiate ourselves because of that, for example, town center. Is such a unique asset and a lot of cities would just. Love to have a town center environment like that, so. Making sure that when we think about economic vitality, we're building on the, the success of town center. But also considering how to continue to support and improve the vitality and vibrancy of town center. There was a little bit of discussion about. What makes these places successful and I thought that was really. An interesting discussion, I don't know if there's some literature out there, Andrew, but you know, the difference between. U Village, that's done really well as it's revitalized and been renovated. Whereas Redmond Town Center has kind of declined, so you know, what are. What are some of the things that contribute to success of a place? What we always talk about is. People who live nearby retail, rooftop sequel retail, basically. And, you know, having, having been in Redmond, that's where our office is, I stay there a lot, um. It's kind of interesting, because there's a lot of redevelopment downtown, of course. Tons of mixed use housing going in. But it's not necessarily in close proximity to the town center. It's kind of on, a little bit on the periphery of it, so. It's kind of interesting, then of course, light rail's been under construction. Right in the middle of, you know, between town center and a lot of that downtown redevelopment, so you kind of wonder, has that been a barrier? Um, so it'll be kind of interesting to watch what, what happens there in the future. Uh, the city manager brought up some discussion around the tech industry and not forgetting. That there could be potential to attract tech industry businesses, employers. Um, we also talked about even like small business incubator spaces, I think. Some of the council members saw examples of that on the tour that they went on, they thought that was great. Good, good discussion on parking, I think there's a little bit of a concern that will. Will go too low on parking ratios because we've got the bus rapid transit. And a lot of transit oriented development areas are saying, oh, we don't need as much parking, but in Mill Creek, a lot of people need parking. And so just finding the right balance for that is something we talked a lot about. Go to the next.
Do we know what the ratio of the town center, uh, parking demands were? Do we have any information on that? What it is today, like the demand for the parking versus, you know. With how much spaces there are available there and compare that to if we know any other information, other ones that were good or bad. So we can, kind of put numbers on there, is that something to pursue further down the road?
Well, that's a good suggestion, I don't know that there's been a capacity or utilization study, I do know. Cause I go down there a lot, that the parking structure is often empty. But the street is always full, you know, in, in downtown, so. Or town center, but that's a good suggestion. There are certainly some good examples of parking ratios out there that we could look at and. Look at where our code is now and understand, so we can look into that. Everyone talked about the importance of having. Strong design standards. I think what sometimes gets lost in the mix is that Mill Creek has some good design standards now. And there's a design review board. And so it's important to leverage that, um, process. And, you know, maybe a little bit of exploration of what are some of the challenges that the design review board has faced with the code? And do, do those code provisions need to be updated to make them stronger, so that could be something to look into. Development agreements as an important tool, a lot of the places where council toured. Development agreements were front and center as part of, um. Being able to build public benefit and amenity spaces, um, with redevelopment. Uh, let's see, I just wanna make sure I capture everything. We talked about extending the look and feel of town center. Making sure that, that, that there's a sense of identity and gateway to the community. As we look at redevelopment in the south, south of town center. There was a mention of the potential for. City owned properties to transition. Any other based just south of town center, are there opportunities there? That there's really a need for a strong central hub and civic center. Public space as your community grows. And so even if, you know, city hall were to remain in the same place. Re, you know, a potential redevelopment sometime in the next twenty years that really. Leverages that sense of a civic campus could be really helpful. So we had, and we had some great engagement suggestions from the participants as well, so just wanna thank everybody for. Having a great meeting and great discussion and we'll be taking all of those ideas into consideration as we move forward. And we will have another one of those in a couple months, so looking forward to that.
Uh, I just wanted to add one thing there, they, if you could go back just one slide real quick. You, we, we talked about the city owned properties and specifically in city hall north and city hall south. And they wanted to make clear that no one was suggesting that we sell these properties. Consider a way in which they could be used or used differently. Is what they were discussing, just for the record, for anyone happening to listen to this later or right now. Who is gonna write a story about how the city's totally gonna sell city hall, that is not on the docket. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Matt, you mentioned the issue that there was, uh. Discomfort about annexation.
Yes.
What, could you explain what, President?
The council, I would say, said that they, you know, at, at this point in time, that the council does not have an appetite for annexation at larger areas. Near the city or within the Muga, and so, you know. They want to continue to monitor where Snohomish County is going, influence that, but, you know. It shouldn't be our goal to quote unquote, grow our way out of some issue we have now. I mean, every time you take on an area, you also take on liabilities with it too, and so. I think the council's very astute in looking at that. I know from my previous work, there've been times when the state incentivizes annexing areas, but that's not existing now. And I know the city's done studies on the economics and there's not a big economic boon to the city annexing, and so that had come up. And it comes up occasionally, oh, we'll annex our way into, you know, opportunity and. I think they were pretty clear that that's not, they're, they're, they've been down that path and looked at that.
The way that I understood it was. They aren't looking at anything right now, we are putting into policy for something that is the rules going forward for the next twenty years. And that that is a thing that could happen in the future, but not a thing that they're considering right now. So we talked about rewordings, instead of like, consider annexation. Consider in the case of any future. Something along those, some, that there was a rewording to say, there is today. Maybe twenty years from now, we don't know, different, things can be different.
A lot can happen in twenty years.
Any other questions or?
Yeah, this is meant to be a twenty year plan, I agree that, that we, we should. Suggest exploring in the, this policy document. All that does is just keep it, keep looking at it and if, in the next twenty years, it does make sense to be able to pursue it. I don't think we should just write it off the table. Cause there could be advantages to it down the road that people don't see today.
Yeah, and by, by policy, that's why we have a Muga, it's, it's an area the county or the city has identified as being within its potential urban growth area, so. Okay. Yes. That's exactly. Any other? Okay, so are there for good of the order items?
Well, we do have just a couple of slides on next steps.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Um, and I actually need to correct one of our next steps, I noticed, but. So in our June meeting coming up, we will be then discussing your comments on the environment. Parks, recreation and open space elements. And then we'll introduce transportation, so that'll be kind of exciting to start getting into transportation. Yes, and, um. Then in July, we will not be, uh, discussing your comments on open space, um, or environment, open space again, we will be discussing your comments on transportation. So I apologize for that. Error. And then July, we will also be then introducing the utility and capital facilities goals and policies. And those are really our, that's really our final element for discussion. But as we move into August, we'll discuss comments on those elements. And then bring back some of the work that we've done on other areas of the plan, including sub area information, the community profile content and development regulations, updates that are being anticipated at that time. And then by September, just a reminder, and the next slide, Sybil. September, we'll want the planning commission to be ready to do a full review, formal review of the plan. And be ready to make a recommendation through September, October deliberations. We'll, we'll have a public hearing at some point. And then have you make a recommendation to city council. And then city council will move to move forward with their adoption process by November. So that's the plan.
Any final questions? And thank you, Mandy, for, again, and another amazing presentation and.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew, as well. So then I go to for the good of the order.
So I, I've got a general question. So Sybil, is the twenty fifteen comprehensive plan on the website somewhere? I could not find it, but that's not saying anything.
It is on the city's website. I can demonstrate for you right now.
Okay, or just send us the link so I can find it.
Yeah.
And I guess my second part of the question is, we've talked about goals and policies. Is that all is in the comprehensive plan? Or is there other information that we haven't even been exposed to yet?
Yes, so each element has a background chap, not chapter or section. And so it's usually an opportunity to just cite background information that we're considering as part of policy development. In land use, we typically talk about the targets that have been set by the state and the county for us to meet. Or we'll talk about background on growth management act and, you know, vision twenty fifty and county planning policies. So there's some background information in, in the plan. And so that's why in September and October, we have kind of a good amount of time for you to see the plan as a whole with that background information and some introduction and other, other information that'll come into it.
Is, is there any type of map that goes with the?
Oh, yes, we will have maps too.
Okay, well, that's what I wanted to see the twenty fifteen plan to see what
Okay.
Sort of what the whole thing looks like.
Yeah, it's really the land use map. Yeah, sorry. Go ahead, Andrew.
I was just gonna say the, the housing and economic development background chapters. You have seen, but they were just in those tower points that we provided to you over the past couple of months. And they're, they're going to be in a, you know, you know, report document form at this time. But, but the information is essentially what, what I've been bringing to you as we've been developing these for those elements. And I think similar to some of the others.
Okay, thank you.
So after the comprehensive plan is complete and is approved, is the next step code changes and zoning changes?
Yes, so some code changes need to occur concurrently with the comprehensive plan. Anything that would need to be done to support comprehensive plan needs to be adopted concurrently. So we'll be bringing that forward in a, in a future meeting to talk about that. But there are some code changes that would need to be done by the end of the year. I'm timed with the comprehensive plan. And then the city is talking about other code changes that they'd like to make or they're intending to make that would happen, you know, more like in twenty twenty five. So.
So I was reading about what the state is requiring cities to do. I may be misreading this, but it indicated to me that there was a requirement by the state to make necessary zoning changes within six months after, after the comprehensive plan is approved.
Yeah, that is probably around House Bill eleven ten, which is the middle housing legislation that we've talked about in the past. So basically, that's the state legislation that says that the city will allow duplexes to be built on single family lots. Unless subdivisions have CCNRs or exemptive language like we think the Mill Creek Community Association has. So it would really would, I think we've gone through that in past presentations, but it really wouldn't affect, you know, in real implementation, it really wouldn't affect a lot of the city. But it is something that the city would need to adopt some zoning around next year. So that would be coming back to you guys next year.
And eighty years.
To also add, add to that, we will have to look at our density in our zoning district, right? So like residential and mixed use, because the density from the state has increased significantly. So all, there is a lot of code changes that we will have to do as staff.
I, I think we'd heard the comment about six months after this was adopted, there's going to be a whole bunch of. Somewhere in the past few months, we've heard it in this meeting. Yes, I agree.
No rest for the weary.
Any other questions?
I have, I have one comment. And it's, I was watching some of the past videos and slides. And one suggestion I have is if our graphs, figures, maps, we can make more ADA accessible or colorblind friendly. You know, usually like on a graph or, or a chart, you know, use different symbols or use like cross hatching patterns along with colors. You know, making sure you vary the hue and the brightness and like Esri, if you're using maps, has like a colorblind friendly palette to choose. They also have a link to a place if you don't like those colors, because sometimes they're not the best colors, to a place that where you can put in how many colors you want and that you can go through a cycle of different colorblind friendly palettes. If we just want to try to make our document more accessible, since we have accessibility spread throughout this comprehensive plan. If you need more advice on that, I can give some.
Yeah, no.
And I've done lots of documents on that stuff, so.
That'd be great to get your guidance on that. I would say that, you know, that's definitely something we want to strive for. Sometimes the maps that we have used throughout our process have been created by others. And we don't really have the resources to recreate those. So, you know, unfortunately, we can't do it every time. But if we, if we have the opportunity to create new charts and maps, we should definitely do that. The land use map is kind of a challenge, Commissioner Shulte. So if you have thoughts about that, because it is very colorful, has a lot of different colors. And, you know, we're kind of using colors that people have been accustomed to for a while. So.
Yeah.
But I don't know. Any thoughts about that?
We don't necessarily have to change the color. It's just the, if we change the, the, the brightness and the tone on it so that you make it more white or you make it more dark from the, the general hue of the color. That's are some of the things that make it distinguishable in, to like colorblind people.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you. No comments? So seeing no final comments or questions, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Ren.
And again, welcome, Jennifer.
Thanks.